Okay, good afternoon. We will call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, August 23 to order at 5:30 PM. It is great to see all of you here this evening. Thank you, parents, staff, students, community members, all of you. And sensing this energy and excitement in the room, it kind of reflects the same energy and enthusiasm I've seen in our schools. Our schools opened last week, and I know that several of our board members have been to some of the open houses, and there is a lot of energy and excitement in our schools, and that's translating here to the boardroom. So, thank you, welcome back. Hope all of you had a fantastic summer, and here we are again for a start of a new school year. So, before we start our regular board meeting agenda, I do want to take a couple of minutes and share some positive news about the district, provide an update as to where we are as a school district in our ultimate mission, which is restoring excellence in education and service. So, coming out of the pandemic a year and a half back, District 11 was ranked 158 out of 178 school districts in the state of Colorado, based on the Colorado Measures of Academic Assessments on Student Achievement and Growth. Five years back, pre-pandemic, we had four schools that were categorized as priority improvement or turnaround schools. Those are the schools that were on the state watch list. Post-pandemic, a year and a half back, that number had grown to 17, from four to 17, 17 schools on the state watch list. Essentially, that was the starting point for this current board and Superintendent Gall, 158th in the state and 17 schools on the state watch list. Last week, we received our first after the one-year mark, we got the state test results for this academic year. We are still in the process of analyzing all the information that was provided to us, but based on the initial preliminary analysis and some of the media reports, we are confident in projecting some overall trend. First, District 11 is one of two school districts in El Paso County that showed improvement in both English and math. As a reference, there are 17 school districts in Colorado Springs. Two school districts showed both improvement in math, and District 11 is one of them. Second, our internal analysis showed that the number of schools that we are tracking on the state watch list, the number that I talked about, 17, we've cut that list into half. Half of our schools are coming off that state watch list. And most of that remaining schools are also trending in the right direction, including Mitchell High School.
You haven't called a meeting yet, so you're not getting a live stream of your good news, but I'll repeat it when we get there later.
Okay. This is not, this is not on livestream?
No, because we didn't call the meeting yet, so it's...
But I thought you said 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, you were counting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just give them the...
Yeah, let's... Okay, good. Sorry for that interruption. Now, back to the good news. In addition, according to our local media source, the newspaper who analyzed all the district rankings and the statewide trend, District 11 today is ranked 79. Okay? So, that is moving up from that 158th ranking that we are talking about to what we are out here, 79, in just over a year. So, great cause for celebration, great news. This is really gratifying, because this is not just the board work out here. The board sets overall guidance, the board sets overall governance, the superintendent or one employee goes and executes that. But it's to get this type of unprecedented growth and achievement, it is because of the work of our staff, the teachers, all collectively leaning in and putting students first. Okay? So, all... So, I do want to take a minute and thank, on behalf of the board, all the staff who did this phenomenal work over this last year to move the district where we are right now. Great start, but if you personally ask me, I think we are 78 spots too low. Our goal is to be there, the district of premier excellence in El Paso County. So, everything that we do going forth is going to be with that mission and vision in mind, move our schools to be the top-notch schools that provide high-quality education for our kids. It's all about the students out here, so we want to make sure that the expectations and the culture that we sit in District 11 is high expectations. There is no compromise on there, no excuse, high expectations and no excuse. So, we are the heart of Colorado Springs, we are excellence, and we are going to shout out that message from the rooftops and the mountain tops to make our presence known in this community. And thank you all for being here, and I wanted to share this message before we get on to the board meeting. With that, and I'm sure Superintendent Gall will also share more about this in his superintendent's report later on down there. Rule call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Daniels?
President.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Loma?
Director Loma is out of town, and he could be joining us virtually at some point in time during the meeting.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So, six board members in attendance, Director Loma is out of town, and he could be joining us later. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Ott, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, rule call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The motion has been adopted, the agenda has been adopted as presented.
There's still more motions in there, too.
May I please have the Howard Elementary School students to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Come on up, guys. There's the flag up there. Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which he has no power.
Thank you, you guys were amazing. Okay, we have some students to recognize, awards and recognition. Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, if I could get all our FCC LA student award winners to start making their way forward, and I'll let Melissa start reading the great news. But before we do that, just like, look around how many kids are in this room right now. Like, this is a school district that is student hurt. We might have to line them up twice. Go ahead, Melissa.
D-11 students take top honors at the 2023 FCC LA National Leadership Conference. The 2023 FCC LA National Leadership Conference took place in Denver, Colorado from July 2 to July 6, drawing more than 7,900 students, educators, and guests from across the nation. This gathering provided a valuable platform for attendees to expand their leadership skills, sharpen their talents, explore career pathways, and listen to inspiring speakers. At the heart of the conference were the highly anticipated Students Taking Action with Recognition (STAR) events. Over 4,300 FCC LA members competed in these events. STAR events play a pivotal role in supporting student development by enhancing their classroom experience and guiding them towards successful career pathways. With over 30 events to choose from, participants can demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and abilities by addressing important issues concerning families, careers, or communities. By researching the topic and implementing projects to advocate for positive change, students acquire valuable skills and industry insights needed to thrive in the 21st century. Holmes Middle School students had 11 of the 14 students placed in the top 10 of their Coronado High School had three of five students placed in the top 10 in their STAR events. Coronado High School also received the National Public Relations Award and $500. Odyssey Echo High School had one student qualify for Nationals. The students' projects exemplify their dedication, creativity, and commitment to making a positive impact on the lives of others. Their accomplishment at the national level is a testament to their hard work, teamwork, and unwavering passion.
Do we want to kind of, did we finish them? Is that the whole thing?
I didn't read all their names.
Okay, read all their names. Everybody raise your hand when you hear your name, like, is your...
Holmes Middle, the following students earned gold and first place. Eliana Moore in Focus on Children, Laney Bushman and Jonas Friesima in Sports Nutrition, and Estella Baltis in Teach and Train took second place in their events. Elise Walker and Tolly Thomas, Focus on Children, Jeff Jet Friesima, Bryce McDonald, and Samuel Wilsherson, sorry about that, placed fourth in Food Innovation. Sarah Lovato and Reagan Heron earned a Silver in Chapter and Review Display and were among the top 10 winners. Campbell Riggs in Repurpose and Redesign, and Aleah De La Rosa in Promote and Publicize FCC LA, both earned silver medals, and Olivia White received a Bronze in National Programs in Action. Coronado students Riley Walker earned a gold medal and placed fourth in Nutrition and Wellness. Ava Friesima and Haley Cross Team Event earned a silver medal and placed eighth in Promote and Publicize FCC LA. Lucy Bearman earned silver medal in Career Investigation, and Caitlin Deoy earned a bronze medal in Teach and Train. Odyssey Echo student Brythany Garsis Zermino earned a bronze medal in Early Childhood Education.
Awesome. Big round of applause.
This is Andy Friesima, you want to tell everybody just a little bit FCC LA is, and let's have a student share out just real briefly. That's part.
Yeah, great. So, FCC LA is a national career and technical student organization for middle and high school students. It's tied to family consumer sciences. So, family consumer sciences, we used to call that home economics. So, what we teach in facts classes, like in Miss Gauks at Holmes Middle School, I taught at Coronado High School in Career Pathways, also Dorian Palmer offer these programs. Students get to apply what they're learning in facts into STAR events in FCC LA. So, we have kids competing in sports nutrition, food innovation, fashion design, interior design, we do Teach and Train, all different events related to family consumer science. Yeah.
So, we always say, high school and now middle schools, about finding your excellence through experience, this is an example in action. This is the opportunity we want all our students to have. Samuel over here took 16 grams of sugar out of a chocolate cookie, so I want to thank him, and I want to wring his neck at the same time. Who's your guest?
Yeah, so Ava, do you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay, FCC LA stands for Family, Career, Community, and the United of America. This organization has been around since 1930. One of my favorite parts is traveling to different cities and getting to meet people from like all around the country. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, one more round of applause.
Tight, 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 ready? Woo-hoo, yes! All right, on the count of three, one, two, three. All right, thank you very much.
So, congratulations to all the students. It's great to see our students even active and engaged over the summer, so congratulations on representing your schools and the district with distinction. Thank you, guys. Okay, I am delighted to talk about the next item on the board agenda, which is the board's spotlight on excellence. This board early on stated that periodically, we are going to recognize and celebrate individuals that have made a positive difference to the D-11 community through their outstanding service, tireless work, length and breadth of involvement in District 11, more importantly, advocating for our students and schools, and always watching out for the best interest of the district. Today's recognition is long overdue. This individual we are recognizing and celebrating requires no introduction. He has been such a prominent part of District 11 for over 30 years now, so well-recognized in this community, has represented district with distinction throughout the state. It is my distinct honor and pleasure, on behalf of the board, to spotlight and recognize Mr. Glenn Gustafson. Glenn, it's good to have you here this evening with your wife, Melody. Thank you, Melody, for being here, too, and there are several colleagues that you have worked with, and you are flanked by Dr. Gladich. By the way, it's strange to see you sitting out there as opposed to sitting out here. So, but it's, thank you for being here, Dr. Gladich and Dr. Thurman, both of you being here, and I think several more familiar faces are here to recognize what you have meant for the district, Glenn. And I think I shared this with you, the intent was to do this even earlier last year, but in retirement, I think you are working a lot harder and traveling a lot more than you did when you were working in the district. So, finding the schedule that worked for you to get here for a board meeting, that was challenging, but I'm glad that we can do this right here to kick off the school here. I do have some things to share, but I will first look at my board colleagues to see if they have anything that they would like to comment or talk about before we also have some other distinguished guests talk, and I will go with Director Bankus first.
And Glenn, it's so good to see you here and giving us an opportunity to recognize the contribution that you've made over decades to the success of District 11, to the stability of District 11, and the all-encompassing engagement of all concerned so that we can get what we need in order to move forward. So, thank you for your devotion, and thank you to your lovely wife for all of your opportunity to share him with us.
Director Nelson?
I would just ask Glenn that you would come forward so the rest of the room can see you. I feel like you're kind of sitting with your back to the room, and so they want to see you first. I just want to say thank you. I very much enjoyed my time working with you when you came back to support the district when we were kind of in a lurch without a CFO, and it's very fitting that you are the finance person for a school district for 30 years, because you truly are an educator at heart, and I greatly appreciated your willingness to teach me as the new treasurer, and I've learned a lot from you, and I'm very grateful for the time that we were able to spend together and that I could learn from you. And I just also want to make mention that District 11 has received numerous awards over the years for our financial accountability, and that's in large part due to you, so thank you for helping us keep the books.
Director?
Thank you. You have to look behind you from me, I know, I'm hiding over here. Also, a treasurer with your guidance and instruction, getting to know the district, and so thank you for that. Thank you for the ongoing commitment to education for districts across the state and CDE, and I appreciate your family continuing to share you with us, and we know where you, we got your number, so we're going to keep track of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know that there is a special guest in the audience, Dr. Gladich. Would you like to come up and share a few words? Now, so...
It's, good evening, board and Superintendent Gall.
Dr. Gladich, I mean, he needs no introduction, but for those of you who don't know Dr. Gladich, he used to be the superintendent in school district for nine years, 10 years?
Nine, ten.
Nine, yeah, and...
Can add last year, the year before last, and it was close to...
Glenn, and you also stepped up being the interim superintendent for three months. Thank you for you.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity and good evening, board. It's always a nice opportunity to talk about Glenn Gustafson, and I do have a few insights, and one of the things that I tried to think about is what could I really share? And knowing that everything that has been said would be said, would be something that I would say, so I decided to do something different tonight. Phoebe, just close your ears. I have copies of every assessment I ever did on an employee. I kept copies for myself. You never know when you're going to need those things. So, I went to my electronic, they're all electronic and they have signatures, but I went to my electronic file and I pulled out the evaluations, end-of-year assessments, and a few mid-year assessments that I did of Glenn Gustafson, because I thought one of the things that might not be said would be some of those specific skill sets that I appreciated, I think the community appreciated, and helped our district continue to move forward financially. So, one of the things that I found out when I went through it is several times I noted Glenn's consistently provided attention to detail, critical in this area, consistently. He also aligned organizational resources to accomplish key objectives. Each and every year, he would align those resources to whatever the mission and goals would be in place. He also conveyed ideas through lively examples and images. And there was even a time where I asked Glenn to eat peanut butter, because he got so lively. But, but he did it, he did it, and we moved forward. He also developed solutions that addressed problems. He developed plans that contained contingencies for the future, always thinking forward, thinking of the future. He successfully integrated strategic and tactical planning. He always spoke candidly about tough issues facing the organization. That was important, especially to me as superintendent, that he would do that, and I always appreciated that candor that he would display. There were times that I would want to not, but there were times that it made a difference, and it made a difference for the district. So, Glenn always told the truth and provided his thoughts regardless of what we would want to hear. He also took the lead on unpopular issues through necessary actions. I imagine you could probably be thinking of a lot of things that you did with some of these skill sets, and I'm talking about Glenn, but Glenn expected success. He kept the elephant on the table, he created the condition for sound fiscal management, and he also created the condition where we each believed that nothing was impossible. There was always a way that something could be done. But one of the things that I want to share with you, a practice that I brought when I came to D-11, is that when someone would be telling me something, and I'm listening, and I'm thinking, this isn't true, it's really this, or no, that's not going to happen, this is what's going to happen. And there were times that, you know, we would just disagree. So, there were moments that I would say, well, would you put a dollar on the wall? And they would. And on my second day of employment, I had a disagreement with our CFO, and I said, Glenn, will you put a dollar on the wall? And he immediately went to it, because he knew he was right. But he didn't know that I had made school visits, and I knew what was right. So, I earned the dollar, and I was so proud that the very first dollar I earned in D-11 was from the chief financial officer, and that was a pleasure to say. And only one?
You always won.
Oh, I always won. Yeah, there were a few times I did lose a dollar or two. But anyway, another fond memory that I have of Glenn as superintendent is that when he and I disagreed about an item, and we would talk it through, we would talk it through, and if there was something that I wanted to do, and he's telling me he just can't do that, but let me go back and find a way, and he would support me with those particular needs that I had for the district. So, I always appreciated that. So, bottom line, Glenn served with passion, Glenn had my back several times, Glenn worried about D-11, and Glenn believed in D-11. And through all of those years, Glenn had a wife, and her name was Melody, and Melody supported him each step of the way, and I was very appreciative of her, too. So, with tonight, I appreciate this opportunity to recognize Glenn and appreciate the fact that the board is taking the time to recognize an employee of excellence. Thank you.
It is so great to have Glenn back in this space. Every time Glenn comes into this space, we all get smarter. I have been so appreciative of his support of my transition, leaving just the highest quality finance team that I think exists in the state. We continue to move forward. For those of you that don't know, Glenn is working at the state level and has been a subject matter expert in many of our work sessions to continue the vision. I asked the finance office if they had any tidbits of information that might embarrass Nick just a little bit, and he had a, I'm sorry, Glenn, just a little bit, and there's some rumor about Birkenstocks, but because I'm known for wearing old-style tennis shoes, I won't pick on your Birkenstock policy. But I will highlight one of the things that I think you've heard from everyone tonight is Glenn is not your normal accountant and CFO. I think you were called the extroverted or the exuberant accountant, which is the oxymoron of normally when you go down to the number shop, you don't get the passion, and Glenn has really been able to deliver that passion over a lifetime in a career that has put us on the path to excellence, and so we're just really appreciative. So, I'd like to give you my coin before Parth gives you some more stuff.
I can echo everything that you have already heard from this, so the dedication, the commitment that you brought over 30 years. The thing that stands out to me is over 30 years, you worked for several superintendents out there, and you were able to put the same passion and commitment and vision that that new superintendent brought to that district, and you were able to implement that plan. So, thank you for all that you did, and Superintendent Gall, what he was talking about is that you bring that uniqueness that you don't see in a CFO, and sometimes we are looking for that purple squirrel that's got all these qualifications and more. You are that purple squirrel. You fit all the qualities that we are looking for. And over the years, the district went to our citizens and asked for extra support through MLAs and bonds, and we owe a big debt of gratitude for those MLAs and bonds being passed, because you were the driving force behind them. You made it easy for the citizens to understand what is it the district was asking for and be able to communicate that transparently. And I remember the first time I ran into you, it was at Scott Elementary School when you were out there, and I was just a parent at that time, and I can't even recall what that meeting was, but I distinctly remember walking out of that school, and you were getting on your motorcycle at that time. Hopefully, you are riding it safely like you always do at that time, but you were, and I came and approached you and introduced myself, and you took 10 minutes of your time, and you engaged with me, and that has never, that's been your personality that I will always remember. It doesn't matter whether it's a parent or a person on the street, or a community member, or a board member, or the superintendent approaching you, you always took the time to engage with us, and just like Director Nelson and Director Ott talked about it, I was the treasurer, too, and you helped me so much learning about the School Finance Act and everything that goes with it. And all the conversations that we had, I will shamelessly say that some of the strategies that we talked about, I have stolen it from you, and they have been operationalized in the district now. So, thank you so much for all that you did. You will, more than anything, you will remain my friend. So, it is my great pleasure and honor, on behalf of the board, to shine the spotlight of excellence on you, Mr. Glenn Gustafson, in recognition of your outstanding service to school District 11, for your unwavering commitment to D-11 students and staff, and positively impacting public education in Colorado. Thank you, you have made a difference.
That's great. There we go, good, good. On the count of three, one, two, three. Again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, Glenn, Glenn, you do need to say a few words.
This has gone on entirely too long. It's been my pleasure to serve the staff, the students, the Board, and the administration of District 11. Clearly, I was the problem because as soon as I left, student achievement's on the rise, enrollment's coming back. So clearly, I was the problem. But it's been my pleasure, I'm a D11 product, and I'm so thankful to have served for 32 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is Halbert Elementary School. I apologize for keeping these students waiting. I know that they are excited. I talked to them out there up front. They are excited to come and share some positive learning experiences with us. Superintendent Gahl?
Yeah, I'm really excited tonight to bring Halbert Elementary School. It is the perfect combination of how a quality neighborhood school can exist in a pathway school. This is where we do outdoor education on the west side. And Toby and his team are gonna bring the children forward and demonstrate a little bit about what it means to be a part of that Halbert community. So I'm gonna let, are you, are you ready? Or you got a little setup though? A little more setup to go. Great.
All right, well, good evening Superintendent Gahl and School Board members. Thank you for having Halbert Elementary as a spotlight school tonight. We are the best outdoor learning school in El Paso County and beyond. And I'm ready to say that. Our students will be coming in here. Go ahead, right up front, in the set spot. All right. So our LTE, Lisa Schott and Halbert students are going to engage you in some learning activities that exemplify how academic learning and standards are integrated into outdoor learning experiences. Please keep in mind, these learning activities that we're going to do for you have been modified because we are not outside. I asked if you could just go outside with us because you've got a wonderful place right out here. You know, it's small, but it's really nice. They said, "No, you had to stay in here." So, so we tried our best to modify those inside, which we do have to do on occasion if the weather's not good. But, you know, we try to do a lot of those outside as opposed to indoors. And we have 10, more than 10 locations, 10 on our campus, and then additional locations off our campus that we call our learning spaces. So the teachers can pick any of those learning spaces from which to do their lessons. Lastly, I asked some of you if you could come forward and participate in the activities. So we have some of these activities that we're going to do and kind of demonstrate. Of course, it's not the full activity, it's just a partial of it. But we need your participation, and don't worry, you won't look very silly or anything like that. And so we'd love for, we at least need four. We could have more. But if you want to come forward. And our first activity, our learning activity, is with our fourth and fifth graders. And we brought four of them here tonight with us. Eisen, Lexi, Charlie, and Levi, you want to go ahead and stand up and get ready? And Mr. Gahl, I heard that you have a microphone over there. There it is, yes. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the students and Mrs. Schott to help lead this first activity.
We'd like to introduce you to an activity, oh dear. This activity shows how an animal population depends on and is affected by the resources that environment, that, in that environment.
We will start with two deer. Put two people at one end of the carpa area. What do deer and all living things need in a habitat to survive? Food, water, shelter, and space.
Okay, okay deer. We are going to focus on three of these in the activity. We are going to say the deer have enough space. These are the symbols you will need to show food. Hand on tummy, water, W on fingers, in front of mouth, and shelter, hands like a roof, in front of chest.
On, on another end of the room with, with, be the, will be the resources of food, water, and shelter. Our deer will need to find a resource in order, in order to survive, order to survive.
All right, so just a little clarity, so we have our two deer down here. You need to look for a resource. You are either going to say you want water, that you want food, or that you want shelter. But you're gonna turn away, and you're not gonna let them see what you are wanting. So if you will turn that way and decide on one of those symbols. Those of you who are resources, you're gonna choose to be one of those resources. So choose either your food, water, or shelter, and you're gonna hold that up in front of you. Okay? So when I say the words, "Oh deer," our two deer, oh, and you guys also have to turn around and look that way. So when I say, "Oh deer," we're gonna have our deer and our resources both turn around. We're not running because we've got a big podium in the way. But we're gonna have you look for the resource that you have on, in front of you. That is a symbol you may not change, so you have to find it over there. If you find it, you're gonna take that resource and bring it back over here. If you do not find that resource, you're going to come to me. Oh deer. So our deer were successful in finding what they needed that year. So we're gonna move on to year two. So now we have four deer. Okay, if you will all now decide on a symbol, turn around, decide on a symbol if it's going to be food, water, or shelter. Those of you here for resources, choose one of your resources. Oh deer. Remember, if you don't find your resource, please come to me. One of them already died. So we went from a population of two to four, to now just two because these three died. So you will now be natural resources, or did you guys make it? Did you make it? Okay, so you are now resources, okay? Did not see it. Too late, too late. The food went away. Winner came. Okay, all right. So if you get the idea, okay? So Board, if anybody here is a resource, Levi, do you mind picking up the resource pieces from us? I'll go ahead and collect them. Board members, we still would like you for the next activity. So if you don't mind, you can either head back to watch the rest, or you're welcome to watch from up here. Okay? All right. We have to get something out. And so, students, if you will grab your papers.
This is the data we collected. Each round was one year. So we have 14 years of data. We took that data and put it on a line graph. The X, the X-axis, we, is the years, and the Y-axis is the numbers of deer.
Look at years one, two, and three. The population of deer is going up. That means that the environment had enough food, water, and shelter to keep the population growing.
Look at, look at years four and seven. There was a drastic drop in the population. Our drop was due to a drought that limited food and water in the environment.
Drought was a natural limiting factor that affected our deer. But we also talked about human-caused limiting factors, like poaching or collisions with cars could affect our deer population.
So we ran this as a class just this week. And so there's been a great conversation, lots of places for us to continue. But they did see that the fluctuation of the population is a natural course, and that there is limiting factors that can affect the population as well as capacity for, for an environment as well. So let's give them a round of applause.
And so as we make a transition from one activity to another, I just want all those watching to see the different ways that learning can occur. Any of us over 29, you know, raise our hand. And we're used to a much different experience from public education. You're seeing a deep demonstration of both learning standards and how children are interacting with the environment that they're in, which is the ultimate goal. So Toby.
There we go. Our next activity is with our second and third graders. And that will be Lila, Clem, Kevin, and Scarlett. And they're getting set up. And again, Board members, if you'd like to join in on this activity with our second and third graders.
So our second and third graders worked on a water cycle activity called the Incredible Water Journey. They have, they had a piece of paper where they had to roll a die. They had nine stations in their water cycle. From groundwater to ocean, glacier, animals, plants, groundwater. So they were given a sheet where they had 14 stops. They've done 12 of them at school. And so what their job right now is, is look at your stop number 12, find where you ended on your water cycle, and please go to that label. Okay? So remember, there's some over here, because we've got a big podium in the way. Okay? And now when the students are at their station, we'd like a Board member to come to them and help them finish their next two stops. So what that is, is they're gonna roll the die, it's gonna tell them where they go. And then when you go there, they are collecting beads the color of their stop so that they will be able later to write a story on their water journey. Okay? So we're gonna let them finish their two stops. Okay? So while they're finishing that up, they're gonna be completing their stops. So what we do with this is that we take these stops back to the class. And I do show them that depending on where they, where they landed, such as in a glacier, it might be that they're there for 20 to 100 years. If they go to the atmosphere clouds, it might only be nine days. So they take this information, we talk about having a little bit of fun with their writing, and they create as if they are the water molecule, they create their personal incredible water journey. And so what these students did is they chose a couple of stops, and they would like to share that writing with you. Okay? Did everybody get done with their stops? Thank you, Board members. All right, so would you like to go first, Kevin? Would you like to go first? So your writing? So your writing's underneath. Okay? Would you like to tell them the stops that you have included? You're going to do your...
Oh, yeah. I'm including my stops to the, a glacier, a cloud, and being stuck in the ocean. I was stuck inside a glacier, and now I'm evaporating. And now I'm falling, oof. That water is hard, it's a little salty. So I must be in the ocean. I've been stuck inside the ocean for a long time. But I've seen the Titanic, sharks, a killer whale, and an octopus. Not bad for being here for 15,000 years.
I was in nine days in the clouds. Then I fell. I dove into a lake. Next, I was sucked into a river. I was surfing.
I got slurped up by an animal. I heard it walking away from the water with me inside. It was an elephant. I could feel it getting warmer in here, and it started to move me. I came out in its sweat and evaporated to the clouds. I was with lots of my friends. We started falling down, and it was getting colder and colder. I turned into a snowflake and landed softly on a glacier. I saw something in the distance. Ouch, I got stepped on by-
And we have Winston and Ruby. All right. So, these are our first graders, Winston and Ruby. And we were learning about camouflage and that as an adaptation. An adaptation is something that a living thing has, or it does, that helps it to survive in an environment. So, as an example for an adaptation, Ruby has...
A squirrel.
And what's an adaptation with your squirrel?
His tail.
What about his tail? What does it do for him?
Helps him balance and it's like a blanket.
Winston, who do you have?
A beaver. And his body is waterproof, so then, it helps him dry when he's in the water.
So, as an adaptation, these are some great things we talk about. We focused for this lesson on just camouflage, okay? And so, Winston, can you tell me what is camouflage?
Camouflage is something that an animal blends into its environment.
And then, Ruby, why would something want to camouflage itself in the environment?
So, then, it doesn't get eaten.
Gotcha. Yeah, we've been talking a lot about that, haven't we today? Yeah. So, Ruby and Winston have created some camouflage creatures that they would like to give to the board members. We have some environments that we created. So, normally, we would just take them outside and we would have them look at places in the environment to find. And they would make a camouflage critter that they could hide and have their friends find. So, in this case, do you guys want to put your puppets down? So, Ruby, those are yours. And before you leave, let's ask this question. This is the question that they want to ask of the board members when they give you their camouflage critter.
Which environment camouflage camouflages our animals best?
Which environment camouflage camouflages our animals best? Because Dickie said, "Come on over. Come on over." Way to go. Nice job. I want to thank our students that agreed to be part of our spotlight. You can go ahead and stand up, take your sit spot with you. You guys can head to the back. Thank you very much. Take a bow as you go. Great job. All right. Well, Halbert, we strongly believe that building student relationships with the natural world cultivates health and well-being, academic performance...sorry, let me...oh, I already went there. Up on the screen, you can see our latest academic performance on the district benchmark and state assessment. And it also cultivates stewardship of nature and community. By engaging students in meaningful and purposeful experiential learning, like the ones we gave you a glimpse of today, students are more engaged, learn more, and they retain what they have learned longer. They were so excited to be able to come here, but they were actually more excited about the activities that they were learning from. And I heard the parents saying, "Oh," they were talking about "Oh, dear" at the dinner table. So, it's those things that they remember and they can connect that learning and remember it and retain it longer. I invite you to come and visit Halbert and see us out in the natural environment there when we do our activities. All right. And I'd like to conclude with one of our partners, Molly Till, who is a parent at our school and had a student here tonight, just to say a quick one minute about Halbert Elementary. Thank you.
Hi. Yes, my student was here tonight. I have a second grader. And when Toby asked my husband and I to speak tonight, we both were so excited when Halbert began its path. My husband's job is natural resource manager. He works for the Forest Service. It is his life. He was on the committees. He's busy tonight and couldn't come, but we were really excited to contribute to this process. What we thought of when they started this is we were talking to each other and thinking, you know, remember when they were babies? And if they would cry or they'd be upset, we'd just take them outside. If you just take them outside and they have like a breeze or, you know, the sun on their skin, then they'll just calm down. And how great is it that they're going to get those opportunities to be in nature, to have that reduce their stress and have that calming influence while they're learning at school? We see other effects, like Toby said. The outdoor learning is what we hear about. It's what we hear about at the table. But, it's also what we hear about when we go out into the world and we're doing things. They have those connections and they are taking those ideas into the real world. They're excited about school. They're excited about being outside. And for my husband especially, he said, "Make sure you mention this." They are becoming stewards of our environment. They have a love of nature. They have an understanding of community and how it all works together. And that is coming directly from Halbert. We're so proud and pleased to have our family, both of our children at Halbert. And we're so glad that this board and this district recognizes the importance of integrating nature into our learning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Q and A for our principal at Halbert?
Any feedback or comments from board members? Director Jorgensen.
Your presentation activities took me back. I used to be a middle school science teacher and I remember doing "Oh, dear." It was much more aggressive with middle schoolers. But, if you're outside, maybe running at them and, yeah, competing, right? The competition for limited resources. So, excellent activities. So good to see that. You are on my school list this year. So, I'll be there before elections just to make sure I get there. And, yeah, we love the activity. If you go back to the slide there, for folks that don't know the mean growth percentile, if our students are learning one year's worth of education in one school year, that's at the point-five mark, or fifty percent. So, the fact that we've got students here that are learning more in a year than in a given school year is fabulous. So, those are numbers that we all should be excited about because we got kids learning more and then they are bare minimum required to. And so, your school is on top of it. So, thank you so much for your leadership.
And thank you, Director Jorgensen, for pointing that out. That is a tremendous accomplishment, yeah, for the parents to know that your students are growing more in a year than what is traditional. You're getting a year and a half worth of growth sometimes in a year. Any other comments from board members? Seeing done, Superintendent Gaul?
Yeah, I just want to thank Toby and all of the team. Mrs. Schott, if she's still out there, I would just love for her to just get one more pass. No? Just, I mean...
She doesn't like to be in front. She does really well.
First of all, you know, teaching is hard. Asking teachers to come in and teach at the floor of a board meeting on an outdoor education curriculum has got to be one of the most challenging things that we've done. And I just really appreciate how Halbert did that for all grade levels, right? So, Halbert's not a school...there you are. Come on forward. Thanks. Just a tremendous effort of making outdoor education come inside today for a half an hour. I think we all feel the power and we saw the rigor of what you're doing as well. Your children are articulate, they're on point, they understand the data that you're presenting. So, just for everybody that watches, choice is an active part of District 11. Choose Halbert. Thank you.
Yes, do please. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for all the parents for bringing the students here. Thank you for being here, part of the celebration and the parent that came and talked about Halbert, too. Yeah, some great things happening at one of our schools out there.
There goes the Grim Reaper.
So, moving on to the next item on the Board of Chenda report, Superintendent's report. Superintendent Gaul, you've got some things to share after the first week of school.
It has been a great start to the school year. We are only an hour in and kids are starting to get back towards home, to get towards their homework. We have just a few more student opportunities and celebrations. Last week, we talked about this idea of having a new challenge coin for the district. Is Evelyn Kellner here? Can Evelyn come forward? Evelyn, please come on forward. And Jennifer, is Ms. Peterson, are you here as well? You are. Thank you so much. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the challenge coins, it's a military tradition. I think it's really taken off a lot in the public sector of how is it that you demonstrate pride for your organization and then reward people for excellence by sharing with them with your coin. Last year, our coin was based upon our hundred-and-fifty, our sesquinternational celebration. And now that we come into this first full year after a hundred-and-fifty years, I set a challenge out to Lauralee McDaniel in our arts department. And I said, "I want our coin to be student-designed." And so, what you see on the left is Evelyn's original art drawing. And then, what you see on the right is how the back of the coin transpired into that. Evelyn, would you like to share with anybody what that represents to you about Colorado Springs?
D11 is based around Garden of the Gods. So, I drew Garden of the Gods.
And with that, and I would also like to thank our teacher, Ms. Peterson, as well. So, Evelyn, you are the recipient of my challenge coin. Thank you. There's all kinds of rules with the coins. If you drop it and somebody else doesn't have theirs, they owe you a drink of choice.
If I sit down, I did.
If you drop it, I'll tell you the whole thing. There you are. And you're a Coronado now, right? Was at home, now a Coronado. Thank you. I heard the term partnership earlier, and so, I'm going to bring forward Courtney from the American Heart Association. We started a very formal relationship with Courtney and team last year where we were school-based as well as district-based. Courtney, you want to take the microphone?
Absolutely. Hi, everybody. How are you all? Good? Oh, yay, the pictures are up. I'm so excited. I actually sent these in to Shauna and I want to give one shout-out to Steve at Chapita who gets duct taped to a flagpole every year for his Kids' Heart Challenge. It's amazing. And I will tell everybody, I will not make you do that, but Steve does it every year and it's fantastic. So, I just want to say thank you to all of the D11 community for partnership, especially for Mr. Gaul for bringing this partnership together. I have a Heart of Gold Award for you that I would like to present and say thank you.
Thanks so much.
Not only does he support heart health for students and staff alike, but for really the whole community. We got to partner in a heart walk this year with everybody, so I got to see many of you there. And I just want to say thank you so much for your support. And I also want to thank all of the principals that participate in Kids' Heart Challenge. We have certificates for you. We will be in the back to be able to hand them to you. But, there are twenty schools that participate in Kids' Heart Challenge every year. There were seven this year that had the greatest impact that they've ever had in helping educate their community on heart health. And I just want to share that District 11 schools had over three hundred families that learned about hands-only CPR and can save a life in the circumstance if necessary. So, you all should give yourselves a round of applause.
Thank you, Courtney. I want to thank Courtney and all of the American Heart Association. I've shared this personal story before, but at fifty-six years old, both my parents are now deceased and both died from heart attacks. And both of them were preventable and both of them were things that we talked about, but my parents just couldn't make the lifestyle changes in their later years to get there. And so, this partnership is important for our students and I appreciate all the principals who have leaned in that way. And it's important for our staff. It is never too late to get heart-healthy. So, thank you to the American Heart Association. Courtney. I'm going to brag a little bit. Dr. Mal Pakem started earlier today on the information about our school priority list and the strong movement that we had. So, just a couple of slides to go through this and then I'll get to the important part of celebrating the leaders. This time last year, District 11 moved from four to seventeen schools on the priority watch list by the state. Now, it was actually fifteen by the state. We added two, McCullough and Saban, because they were marginally on the buffer. And when we looked back at their twenty-nine data, we weren't really sure that they shouldn't have been listed in priority improvement. We did that because, not that we want to label schools as being failed schools, we wanted to make sure that we could allocate the resources against our schools that needed them the most. So, we went from four schools to thirty-eight percent of our portfolio being on the state watch list. And this year, thanks to the governance model and the strong work of every administrator, executive, professional, ESP, our certified teachers, and all the way down really to the students who have grinded so hard this year, we've cut that list in half. And so, I'll toggle back and forth a little bit here. Last year, we had five schools on the turnaround list and this year, all five of them moved up. We're projecting that one is sliding backwards, but we're certain that we have the right plan in place to solve that. I'm going to go backwards again because I'm going to ask you all to look. At Mitchell High School, perennial number-one opportunity for turnaround in District 11 is now moved up to priority improvement. So, I'll do that again for effect. I'll stay on this slide just a moment longer. I appreciate the idea of the arrows that we put in there. The normal way that schools move through state rating systems is one level at a time. It takes a lot to turn a big ship. It is the Lord's and our work to be sure that we can get our students every resource and opportunity that they deserve. Hats off to everybody who's moving up a level. And then, more specifically, we had some really big movers. You can see two arrows at Martinez and West and three arrows at Adams and West Middle School, which are going from being on the state watch list all the way up to the highest category of performance in one year. If you don't think that that's sweat equity in action, go walk one of those schools with us and you'll see it. So, how about a round of applause for them?
Thank you, Courtney. I want to thank Courtney and all of the American Heart Association. I've shared this personal story before, but at 56-years-old, both my parents are now deceased and both died from heart attacks. And both of them were preventable, and both of them were things that we talked about, but my parents just couldn't make the lifestyle changes in their later years to get there. And so this partnership is important for our students, and I appreciate all the principals who have leaned in that way, and it's important for our staff. It is never too late to get heart-healthy. So thank you to the American Heart Association. Courtney. I'm going to brag a little bit. Dr. Mel Packham started earlier today on the information about our school priority list and the strong movement that we had, so just a couple of slides to go through this, and then I'll get to the important part of celebrating the leaders. This time last year, District 11 moved from four to 17 schools on the priority watch list by the state. Now, it was actually 15 by the state. We added two, McCullough and Saban, because they were marginally on the buffer, and when we look back at their 29 data, we weren't really sure that they shouldn't have been listed in priority improvement. We did that because, not that we want to label schools as being failed schools, we wanted to make sure that we could allocate the resources against our schools that needed them the most. So we went from four schools to 38% of our portfolio being on the state watch list. And this year, thanks to the governance model and the strong work of every administrator, executive, professional, ESP, our certified teachers, and all the way down really to the students who have grinded so hard this year, we've cut that list in half. And so I'll toggle back and forth a little bit here. Last year, we had five schools on the turnaround list, and this year, all five of them moved up. We're projecting that one is sliding backwards, but we're certain that we have the right plan in place to solve that. I'm going to go backwards again because I'm going to ask you all to look. At Mitchell High School, perennial number-one opportunity for turnaround in District 11 is now moved up to priority improvement. So I'll do that again for effect. I'll stay on this slide just a moment longer. I appreciate the idea of the arrows that we put in there. The normal way that schools move through state rating systems is one level at a time. It takes a lot to turn a big ship. It is the Lord's and our work to be sure that we can get our students every resource and opportunity that they deserve. Hats off to everybody who's moving up a level, and then more specifically, we had some really big movers. You can see two arrows at Martinez and West, and three arrows at Adams and West Middle School, which are going from being on the state watch list all the way up to the highest category of performance in one year. If you don't think that that's sweat equity in action, go walk one of those schools with us, and you'll see it. So how about a round of applause for them? And perhaps my favorite part about working in District 11, having come from Detroit, Oakland, and Washington DC, is we also have schools that continue to succeed. And so at the bottom, you'll see that we had schools that also moved into performance. They're just not moving from the state watch list to get there. So Queen Palmer, Buena Vista, Holmes, and Coronado High School will also now be rated in the performance category, so another round of applause. Now, the strategy in most systems is that you get a strong instructional leader and you'll move a building. You're seeing that happen here. In order for us to get all our buildings to performance, which is our goal, that means we have to get 1,800 certified teachers the resources that they need. We are going to blend a two-part strategy of continuing to develop the strongest building leaders, but ensuring that we get direct-to-teacher supports, that every teacher feels the power of this district behind it each time they step into their classroom. So how did we do it? It's real simple. We put our money where our mouth was. This is a slide that we showed you in January that said, "We are visiting the schools on the priority list at sometimes a 3X or 4X to 1 ratio of what a normal school visit pulls for." Putting your talent, putting your resources into the buildings that needed the most support is how you half a list in a year. And to confirm that, it's not just halving the number of schools on the list. Dr. Mel Packham said that whoever calculates the state ranking said we went from 158th to 79th. That's just about the same half number there. And so it's showing you that putting the time and the effort and putting the resources closest to the student in the classroom will get you these types of results. So I'm going to ask each area superintendent to come forward and introduce their principals who have moved up a level this year. We'll start with the West. Darren?
Yep. First one, we're going to start with West. Middle School, West Elementary as well. Once... Yep, come on up. This is Ron Hamilton. Apparently, he was a former principal at West Elementary, so great work. Nice job, Steve. So, thank you very much. Dr. Shayla Parker will be here with us tonight if she could as well. She was the West Middle School principal last year during this incredible work. Unfortunately, she is on a cruise in Alaska. So, yeah, she couldn't be here tonight, but we will celebrate her when she returns. You know, I get the benefit of coming in at a moment in time where this school has done incredible work. This faculty is going to be able to ride that wave, and we're going to keep it going. These two people know how to get to the heart of what's going on at West, and just in the last two weeks, I've learned so much from them. So I want to make sure they both get a chance to speak and that they both get a round of applause at the end because they did the work.
Nothing like being thrown on the spot, right? I just, as I told our teachers today, they were overjoyed with all the hard work. You know, a lot of times, administration gets the accolades, but I put that right back on the teachers who were in the grind with us and going through all the hard times and felt the struggles that we felt, and it all paid off. So we told them, "This is the start, and we're going to continue to keep on rising."
Great.
Thank you. Likewise, I agree with everything Jared said, Ron, and then Karen, obviously, hard work. You know, the district has nothing, has supported us in this endeavor, and so thank you for all the support that we've been given. We are working with a new company this year again, and we're just going to keep growing, and so we're really excited. But again, the teachers did all the hard work, and we got them a cake today, and we celebrated big time, and so tears were shed, and they're just so excited. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, all the teachers, the students that help us, and parents, and all the leaders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. West teachers, could you please stand up for a minute? West staff, anybody that's here tonight from West, can you please stand up? Thank you.
Coronado High School, Addie Arnell, come on up. Interim principal at Coronado. She served as an assistant last year, and she has just a wealth of wisdom to share with us tonight, so hold your breaths.
Well, it's just me, so I didn't bring everyone, but our staff worked very hard last year. They've done a great job, and they, we still got more work to do, and we're looking forward to it this year, so thank you.
Tony Carr, Holmes Middle School. Big round of applause for Tony, his staff.
I only have about five minutes, I think, was what I was... Thank you, Dr. Comfort, for all the support last year to help us get to this point. Our school team did an exceptional job. We set the right plan. We put the work into place, and I'm thrilled for all of our staff and students and families for being able to continue this work forward.
Angela Buena Vista. Angela Prochnow from Buena Vista. I'm sorry. Yes, now come on up. You're good. You're good. Montessori school here in District 11.
Thank you. He stole my tagline, "Buena Vista Public Montessori, right here in the heart of the city, D11." So, all of this credit goes to the teachers. They did some hard work digging into how to connect state standards to the Montessori work that we do every day in the classroom, and that work is still continuing on, so thank them and the students, and a few up front, just to say hey, for all the hard work that they continue to do to keep the scores high, but also their hearts headed in the right direction.
All right, Brian, you want to come forward? Brian Relic from our Central. Look at that from Adams. Look at that at Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Gaul, Board of Education. Thanks for this wonderful opportunity to recognize two of the great 12 schools in the central area that are definitely focused on students and staff excellence. It's my privilege to first congratulate and welcome Mrs. Michelle Slider, the principal at Adams, and her assistant principal, Mrs. Letitia King. Come on down, please.
All right, it's truly, we are just so proud of our students. When we got that news, I think it was just a collective celebration, totally proud of our kids and what they've achieved this year, and, you know, it's all about that teamwork. And our team worked really, really hard, really cohesively with that commitment to kids, and I couldn't be prouder of them, too. And so could I have the folks from Adams here, our team, shout out to you?
I would like also to add, thank you for all the support that we have received at Adams. We have a great area superintendent. Now, we do have a new support in our building instructional program, and so, yeah, it's just great things coming forward. So the best is yet to come.
All right, it's my privilege now to welcome and introduce Mrs. Christina Butcher, the proud principal of the Queen Palmer Pandas. Come on down, Christina.
Good evening. I want to keep mine really short. My whole Queen Palmer dream team is up here with me because it is a collective effort. Our mantra is, "Every kid is our kid. All means all. No excuses and high expectations." Let's do three snaps, a roller coaster, and a oh yeah. Oh yeah.
Darren Joyner from our Northeast region.
All right, got to brag a little bit. If you saw the graphic there a couple of slides ago, the Northeast had three schools in priority improvement. We have zero after one year. So huge congratulations to the schools that we're going to give accolades to this evening. The first is Martinez, and under the leadership of Tara Berry, and also her assistant principal, Tiffany Brown, who moved up two levels from priority improvement all the way to performance. Tara, please stand. And our next school is Carver Elementary, under the leadership of Lisa Bazell. And her new dean, Dr. Phoe, came with her tonight, so thank you for coming. And then our final school is Fremont Elementary, under the leadership of Tracy Squires, her newest assistant principal, Kristen Reme, and her TLC, Catherine Romano.
All right, great job, Northeast. Over to the Southeast part of town, Sherry Kalback.
I'm going to bring this celebration home with three more leaders who all did phenomenal work in the last year. I'm going to start at the bottom, work my way up. Penrose Elementary School, up to improvement. Congratulations, Katie Schoolmaster and Penrose team.
I didn't bring anyone with me.
That's fine.
It's just me.
Galileo Middle School, which is now off of turnaround status. Brand-new leader, Julia Scott, and she has her team here with her tonight, too, who is coming up to be recognized. And really, I have to say, although Julia is officially new to us this year, she spent a lot of time at Galileo last spring, and so was able to really get the ball moving on a lot of the improvements that we're seeing at Galileo. And finally, also out of turnaround, Mitchell High School, Principal George Smith and his Awesome work going on in the Southeast as well. Thank you.
As we reported today, this is a great celebration for our district with very intentional strategies to get us there, but we are a long, long way from 50 schools at performance level. We are a long, long way from every student meeting state-level expectations. We're a long, long way from every third grader knowing how to read. We're a really long way away from our special populations even being at gap-closing growth. So we are super proud of what we read today, and we are on the trajectory towards excellence, but we will not rest until we get there. So I want to thank all of those leaders and all the others' leaders. Thirty-three schools now at performance level, on our way. Thank you very much for those slides. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, and we can get into it a little bit more into a work session, but I just wanted to frame for our listeners, where do we go from there? So that in itself, for most school districts, would be enough to rest and say, "Well, we're clear. We've done it. We're no longer the one that everybody talks about," right? But we want to get to the spaces that we said all of our students are not just meeting, but exceeding standards. In my first year, I was really tasked under these board priorities on achievement, enrollment, and engagement. So I'm just going to go a little bit through the framework of how we're talking about that, and what's the vision for District 11? What's the vision for the Colorado Springs School District going forward? So we inherited a K-12 system. I think if you pay attention and listen to the places where we're seeing the most opportunity for growth, both in achievement, enrollment, and engagement, I think it's time that we make ourselves a pre-K to 14 system. Many states in our country fund pre-K out of the tax base. We've had not the easiest rollout for universal pre-K this year, but our district is two times the number of seats in District 49 and three times the number of seats in District 20 for universal pre-K opportunities. This board allocated dollars knowing that the first year's rollout would be difficult. So we are in a position that we were able to deliver on the promise that the state made and then changed in the 11th hour. So we are super excited to continue to open classrooms, and I think we're expecting over 1,200, hopefully by the end of the year, 1,300 kids in our pre-K programs. We know it works. Every study in America shows, the sooner you can just acclimate a child to the social, emotional, and learning environment requirements in pre-K means that they will be much more likely to reach kindergarten readiness standards, and then, of course, our third-grade goals with the state. It also helps us for enrollment. Make no mistake about it, decreasing enrollment averaging is a cancer to a system. We have to invest in the future, which is grab our kids earlier. And then if you just look at the utilization of the building, I'll say it again because I say it every time, tiny toilets, tiny sinks means tiny kids. We can find other places for adults to do their planning. We want small kids in those spaces that our 50- and 70-year-old buildings were designed to host. So we're really fulfilling a vision that existed way before that. And this idea of getting to 14, right? I know the community is confused by what does it mean to go from 12th grade to 14th grade? Concurrent enrollment, dual enrollment, early college, certification, partnership, Mitchell Promise. How does every kid get advanced opportunities to be prepared for a world that demands more? The requirements in our workforce exceed the 12th-grade requirements. I'll say it again, the requirements of our workforce exceed what the average child in America is equipped with after graduating in 12th grade. We have a strong alliance with our new mayor, not just in District 11, but with all the El Paso County school districts, in partnering with our city to solve the workforce gap. We have employers who can't find talent. We have students that every two weeks come here and demonstrate this talent publicly. Let's match the talent of our students to the need of our city. That's what it means to get to 14. How are we going to do that? We're just elevating our game. We are asking every adult in our system to just be 10% better than they were last year. If I were to say to you, "Every child grows by 10%," my APs and principals in the audience, their eyes are getting big. 10% growth at a student level is unheard of. If we, as adults, can commit to 10% better on our own end and translate that to our students, think about where we'll be this time next year. We have a small framework that we call the Arc of Change. And so as I just go through these quickly, I want you to be thinking about achievement, enrollment, and engagement, and how they fit in here. We start this arc with what I call the churn of chaos in the bottom. What do firefighters like? Firefighters like fires. School systems that are stuck in status quo struggle in seeing their way out. We have to have an arc and a framework to be able to get there. Over this last year, we spent most of our time putting in new systems and structures. There was great opportunity for us to do that. I appreciate the partnership and the patience. I know the board, I've moved very quickly, but we have them in place now that we can get to really elevating the game. Every adult should have an individualized training plan, including myself. I have an evaluation process with the board. Every adult should be seeking to elevate to get that extra 10%. And then that allows us to really invest in our students. It doesn't mean we're not investing in students right now, but our students move through a system. The mobility crisis in America, particularly in urban settings, is real. Much of our student movement isn't necessarily by choice. Sometimes it is forced. It is very difficult to take a child that is a year behind and then hop, skip them through two to three different schools over the next four years and think that we're going to get there. We can get to our students if we have the systems and structures and the adults that can deliver that on students over time. Just as an example, we've briefed this to all the staff, and I'm sharing it out here, some of the ideas that you can see in the systems and structure. We're bringing future centers. What's a future center? It's how do we make the diploma the beginning, not the end? The goal isn't to get to graduation. The goal is to graduation to equip you to be ready for the rest of your life. Enrollment, as you see the AMP Pathways, the numbers in every one of our AMP Pathway schools are up. The communities are responding to what they asked us to build. You saw Halbert in action. Columbia, Martinez, McCullough, Bristol, Rogers, those schools are in high demand because the community asked us to build it, and we built it, and it's working well. Leadership and teacher pipelines, we talk about this all the time. There is a critical shortage of people who want to make education a career. We have to stop starving that from within. And while we do adult capacity, we've introduced this idea, we talk about it a lot, design thinking. Right now, we've been through many design sprints. How do we not just look at continuous improvement as a two-dimensional conversation, but three-dimensional? How do we take empathetic listening and prototype quickly? We shouldn't have to wait a year to figure out if an idea was a good idea. We've elevated BFI, the professional development that we rolled out this, at the end of this summer, was brand-new. We went direct to teacher. Instead of just asking it to happen singularly through the principal, we did direct-to-teachers based upon functional, and we asked for feedback. We want that feedback. We want to get to the space where we can differentiate... We want that feedback. We want to get to the space where we can differentiate, individualize, and personalize, so every single one of our 1,800 certified teachers feels the power of central office in support of the work that they do. And this dialogue, we are open, we are listening for feedback, again, on best-first instruction. On the first day of school, we launched direct-to-teacher anonymous, or name it, do however you want it, give us the feedback of what's working on best-first instruction, and what do you need more of. We don't think we have the answers. We think we just have the idea, and we need everybody to help us with the answer. And then as we get to students, I said it earlier, I'll say it again, finding your excellence through experience. You saw CTE at the middle school level tonight. You saw it at homes with our FCC LA. We're doing that in several of our middle schools, bringing CTE so kids can bring the learning to life. We briefed two weeks ago our international travel. We also have great experiential opportunities that are happening locally here as well. And this idea of just how are we going to empower our student voice, meaning we have student sounding board, and we're committed to meeting to each one of the student governments in high school. How do we get a student at the dais? That's the goal this year. We don't know if it's each comprehensive high school, one student per quarter, or is it one student, one year, and then it's another high school the next year, but we want to add on. We're in the construction business here. Both Melissa and I will give up a little bit of space that we can get a student right here who can comment and opine on the things that we're making decisions on. Think of the power of having a student sit here in the dais. Okay, I will try to go through that very quickly. That is my superintendent's report for the evening. It's amazing, like, where did everybody go? So we appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing some of the details about how our schools performed and celebrating our staff from each of those schools that moved up a level. That's incredible amount of work that you guys put into it. Selfishly, what I go back and recall a year from this time that we are sitting in, when you have 16, 17 schools, for the people that are listening in the audience, one of the board's responsibility is that we have to listen to the school improvement plan for each one of these schools. And I think in December, I calculated the amount of hours that the board invested in it. It was like 24 hours of work that we put into it in this room, listening to the plans and providing feedback out there. Now, knowing that that time is going to be cut in half, and the board doesn't have to put an estimate, because we've got all these schools, and the plan that you guys put into place worked. So I'm hoping and I'm confident that moving in this direction with the urgency that Superintendent Gall is moving in, that even the eight schools that are remaining are going to come out of the clock next year. And from the board's side, one of our responsibilities is the budget. And when the staff members come and talk about it, it was intentionally, this board made it clear that we want to invest the taxpayers' dollars directly into the classrooms closest to our students. So that has been prioritized over the last two years. It aligns with our board priorities. Early on, we set a clear focus through all the noise that was happening at that time, that we were going to center our priorities on student success, staff investment, and parent engagement. And we have continuously, consistently stayed to those priorities and have metrics associated with each one of those priorities and followed that. And to know that we put that system and structures in place, and now to see that being validated by some outside group, like the Colorado Department of Education, coming and saying our schools have moved in the right direction, that is extremely gratifying. But it is the staff that is doing the work. So thank you for all that you are doing. Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Culture of high expectations and no excuses. Board, you have any comments? Director Bankus.
I also want to take the opportunity to celebrate the great achievements, the progress that we have all made, the dedication, the hard work, the collegiality that it requires in order for us to make the strides that have been made. We, as the board, try to do our best as policymakers to give you the support that we need. We worked really hard together to come up with a superintendent who would push forward on those goals, and we have. I also want to note that when I ran, when a couple of us ran for board, this was the report card at that time, and as was earlier stated, moving 10 percentage points on the CMAS is quite the achievement, and we did. On these new results that we've received, and the total for District 11, all kids in math, they did come up 10 points. We're not where we need to be, but my gosh, that's only been within the year that we hired the superintendent that we have. This board is committed to making sure that we look at all of our kids to make sure that they're getting the supports that we need. And in order to do that and provide a quality education for them, we need to hire quality principals, quality assistant principals, all staff, teachers, bus drivers, all of it. And how do we do that? It's because we set the standards high. We look for quality people. Under our superintendent, we've made decisions about how it is that we can hire earlier so that teachers don't have to sit and wait to figure out whether or not they're going to have a job in the fall. We make sure that we are giving supports through the LATs and through the area superintendents who are not evaluative but come in to give the support that's necessary in order to learn the skills. We want to make sure all our kids are readers. Whether they're readers at kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, that we know is so important. When they get to fifth, sixth, and high school, we want to make sure that there's somebody in the building that's skilled enough to make sure that those kids don't fall through the cracks. Oh, you haven't learned by ninth grade? Oh, well, let's figure out an adaptation. That's not the goal. The goal is to make sure that the kids get the skills that they need in order to be able to be independent and be productive. And this idea of taking it into the two years beyond high school, I think with the partnership that has been laid out at Mitchell, that that's happening, with the CTE environment, that kids get this opportunity to try out different career fields before they make a decision, because all of us in this room and those of us who are listening, very few of us have the same job today that we started out with after high school. So how do we give kids the foundation that they need? It's by giving them a welcoming environment, knowing that you can make mistakes, you can recover from your mistakes, and you can build on what you've learned and be the person that you want to be. So I appreciate the work of this board. I appreciate the work of this superintendent, and I most honestly appreciate all the staff and parents who have come together in a way that says, no, we're not perfect, but yes, we can work together. We can settle our differences, and we can settle on what it is that's important, and what's important is our kids. That's what we're all doing here. And I appreciate the opportunity to celebrate, and thank you for bringing that to our board meetings. This is the best part of the board meeting, right? Finding out all these wonderful things, but we're not done yet. And this board is going to continue to march in this direction, and I would like to see that support for the direction in which we're going spread, not only throughout the schools, but through the board as well. So thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you, Director Bankus.
Director Jorgensen.
Well, what more is there to say? You did such a lovely job. You know, really, just, we say thank you to staff, and that staff means all staff. We've got, you know, everybody from the kitchen staff that are keeping our kids fed and, you know, nutrition in their bellies when they come hungry to school, to, you know, the admin taking care of behavior issues to keep our classrooms safe, and all the ESP and teachers in between. So I think, you know, that clear proclamation and celebration that it is all staff, it's everybody from, you know, kitchen and custodians to the exec pros in that building and the supports that we push in from the district. So thank you so much. It is a big celebration. When Parth called me last week with the preliminary numbers, I just was just so ecstatic. So still on a little bit of a high. So great work to all the schools. Super excited to see more come this year and just to keep this momentum going. So thank you very much.
Director Rock.
Thank you. I'd like to offer my congratulations as well to those schools that have moved, and to those that have maintained, and I hope that we can continue forward to those higher expectations even still of the distinction category. So hopefully we'll move on with some of those. I was also going to recognize ESPs, so I'll recognize volunteers, too, because we do have many in our system, and there's still opportunities, I will add. So call our D11 Engage for that, if you want to get on board. And also, just let folks know that we are excited about this turning around, and not to forget, though, that there are some significant disparities in the data as far as who is achieving, and we need to continue to address that. And I hope that we, as a board, can keep a focus on that as well. Thanks.
Director Daniels.
Congratulations, D11. I am so thrilled and so proud of you. I know you have been working hard for years. This is just a bleep of what you've been doing, meeting you all, visiting the schools, paying attention to the hard work and the heavy lift. I am so grateful to know you, and I am grateful that you are what I consider on my team. You're amazing people. Students are amazing. Again, thank you for everything, and I look forward to another great year.
Director Nelson.
I was just reflecting on how last year, we spent hours reviewing 17 schools' improvement plans, and that was hard. It was heavy, not for the board, for everyone involved. And so tonight, to be able to celebrate these huge accomplishments, that schools have moved the needle, and oftentimes, my focus when I'm giving my board member comments or just sharing out is on academics. We got to improve the academic outcomes for kids. And I just want to say thank you to all who have helped us accomplish that goal, and it's just amazing. I mean, I'll admit, I got teary-eyed when I heard, because I know that so much work has been put into reaching this goal, and it feels so good. I think I was in shock a little bit at first that we actually saw such gains. So let's keep going. We have just incredible staff, and thank you to all the support that everyone has provided to this board, and we hope to continue to support you and your work, and let us know how we can continue to do so.
Thank you, Director Nelson. And I want to acknowledge that the work doesn't stop here. We have accomplished, it's a great start to get there, but to achieve that educational equity, we are talking about reaching to every single student that is there in District 11 and make sure that they are grade-level proficient and achieve and excel and exceed their potential. And that is the objective of this board. But in one year, if we are able to move this kind of mountains, okay, the sky is the limit. The urge that I have and the request that I have to the community is partner with us. There are numerous ways that you can partner with us in moving this needle for the sake of our students. And if we all collectively come together and go in the same direction, instead of sometimes having those opposing things, the sky is the limit for our students. So I hope that we will find ways to partner and to elevate, like what Superintendent Gall did. Great job, and just the start of the amazing direction that District 11 is going in. We had a press conference right here earlier this evening, and I hope the media got the gist of what was presented by Superintendent Gall and myself representing the board, and that was that it is all about excellence in District 11. Okay, thank you. Superintendent Gall. Public comments, moving on. Okay, we have two public comments, so this will be quick, so I don't have to go through all the public comments protocol. Each of you get three minutes, so I will start with this. Mr. Willie Brazil. There will be a clock displayed out there for your convenience out there.
Good evening, board.
And you had something to share with the board, too?
Yes, yes.
You can give it to Ms. Olson up there.
I hope each of you had a copy of what I have right there. I spoke to the, first of all, I want to thank you guys for the great job you've been doing. Twenty years ago, I was on this board, and all we had is a lot of combat with the board, with the public, and you guys have managed to do a good job, a better job, and you also did something. I advocated 20 years ago, was you hired somebody who was out of the educational environment, a person who was focused on doing education, not for the sake of education, improving the system. So as a board, you guys have done a fantastic job in finding a super superintendent. By the way, superintendent, you're going to owe me a beer later on. I plan on saying a little bit more, but the main thing I came here to do is ask you guys to consider compensation, not only for yourselves, but for others who may come after you. You know, D2, I was kind of campaigning with them as well some years, 20 years ago. I said to the board, you guys know, some of you guys work 40 hours a week. I don't know how you do it, but you do it. We had a board person, board president, doing the same thing the docs doing right here. She worked 30, 40 hours a week. She got zero. I'm asking you guys to take a look at board compensation, and I would say do the same thing or something similar to what District 2 has done. They passed a resolution to allow themselves to be compensated, not enough, but to be compensated in some fashion for the work you're doing. So I ask you guys to do that, not for your own benefit, but for the benefit of the system. The system needs to be improved. But I congratulate you guys on the excellent, excellent work you've been doing, hiring this gentleman over here in the corner who's going to owe me a beer later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I have two people here, Ms. Deborah Carlson, Dignice, and Jared Torres. Please come here. Okay, are both of you talking?
I'm there for moral support.
Oh, your moral support, that's fine.
I have some big shoes to fill after those kids today. Thank you for having me today. So what I want to talk about is we are best at West Middle School. I work in attendance. But what I want to tell you is, I understand all the numbers, but it's about loving our kids. Every day when our kids come into West, we love them. We make sure we're accountable for them. We make sure they are fed. We make sure we hug them a million times. We make sure their parents are able to get the information that they need to be successful. So I just want you, everybody, to know and everybody to remember that we are a village. They are our students, and we will continue to grow, and we will continue to be great. And let's all remember just to hug them and love them as much as we can. And I hope everybody visits West Middle School. And I also love being on D11 Engage, and we are going to engage at West Middle School like you have never seen. Thank you for your time.
I just want to add that Deb is the face that a lot of our families see as soon as they walk in the building, and she cares about our staff, she cares about our students. We have some tears together. We care about our families a ton, and we try to do everything we can for them. And she exemplifies the best at West, the motto that we have and the mantra that we have, and I'm glad that she gets a chance to showcase her love for our school. Thank you.
I'm glad you're always supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the end of public comments. Thank you, both of you, for being here and sharing some comments with the board. Moving on, special reports, board member reports. Board, any of you, Director Jorgensen, you are up first.
All right, great. My to be brief, was probably the biggest thing that I loved over the past two weeks was attending the Tesla Middle School ribbon-cutting ceremony with Principal Jason Miller and their staff. That was something this board heard the request of to say, hey, this middle school could function better in a separate building from the high school. And so this board, you know, approved that change, put Tesla Middle School back into Tesla Professional Development Building, and so we put kids back in that school. The work of Jason Miller and his team getting that school ready, and the work of the folks at Tesla that said, hey, welcome back, we'll adjust and move for you, was just phenomenal. And then being there with the staff, and I believe it was Shay, Mr. Gall, you were there. I think Shay was our ribbon-cutting guy there, and having a student cut the ribbon with us was wonderful. So that was great. And then I bounced from there to Henry, which had, at all these schools I've been to, and as many open houses as I can, the way that they are spending the board-approved curve appeal money is awesome. And some of them are in paint, some of it's in new tables, some of it's in benches for, you know, buddy benches and things like that. But it's just so fun to visit every school and go, how did you spend your money? Or it's already evident when you come to the school. So Henry with their hallways looking beautiful, the building just was phenomenal-looking. Then over to Freedom, Scott, Martinez, and Rudy. Then the next night was Bristol, Columbia, Queen Then the next night was Bristol, Columbia, Queen Palmer, and Stratton. And then just last night was Freedom, Russell, and Saban. So I've been trying to make the rounds as much as I can. The energy is amazing, the staff are very excited. I think last year, they were all a little, you know, wondering what it was gonna be like with new leadership and they saw that Mr. Gall and the team of exec pros not only talked the talk, but walked the walk last year. And so the energy of saying, hey, we've got a little bit of experience, we know that what's happening and what's coming through and what supports we have, the energy is just amazing for the school year at all these schools. So looking forward to more open houses later this week, but out there, saying hi to folks. If you see me, just grab me and say hi and love to hear from you, so.
Thank you. Any other board member reports at this time? Okay, seeing none. Melissa, you can pull up my report while I'm talking about it. I just want to chime in on what Director Jorgensen talked about. There are a lot of open houses I attended and some of the times I crisscrossed paths with Director Jorgensen, I saw Superintendent Gall in several of those. And the takeaway for me was the energy and excitement in those buildings, long line of parents and students wanting to get into the buildings, excitement. The picture that you see in the far right is Doherty High School. On that opening day, students walking in with so much excitement and what Director Jorgensen was talking about, some of the money that was allocated, Carver has got a brand-new sign up there that just stands out visually, so appealing. You see so many of our students standing in front of that sign and taking a picture and the painted hallways. This at Carver, when I went there a year back, was just drab, you know, bland and nothing. But now it pops out for an elementary school to have that. You can move it to the next slide, Melissa, I don't have the, do I have the clicker? Okay. And then again, more first day of schools, Freedom has got one of those same things. Steel has got a thriving, flourishing garden out there that the parent community and the students took care of it over the summer break. And the first day of school, some of our schools that I was at, Saban and Freedom, they were welcoming students on a red carpet. How cool is that for parents to run through? The Jenkins students were there to welcome the Freedom students to school. They took time out of their schedule to be there to welcome them and parents were so excited to see their little kids walk through that red carpet. So some amazing activities put together and you can see that big banner behind Freedom, they won, okay? They were one of the choice schools out there. And this is something that I've been giving regular updates on, on Doherty Track and Field. That's how the track and field looked in the middle of summer on the far left. That was the before picture and now look at where it is right now. It's still a work in progress, but this is so attractive and so great for our students. They've got premier, state-of-the-art facilities out here now to compete our Doherty High School Spartan kids and our parents are going to come and enjoy this. And this is going to be also a wonderful way to attract more athletes into Doherty out there. And I want to thank Chris Odom out there and her team facilities. It's a proud moment. I know that Coronado has also got a similar field and maybe they've got, they are a little bit ahead of schedule than what Doherty is, but Doherty is planning on opening this by middle of September. And just excited to see some of these investments that the board puts into, the dollars that we put into, translate into these kind of results out there benefiting our students. And the last thing, couple of things I wanted to point out, that I was there with Director Jorgensen at the Tesla Middle School too, for the opening out there. So thank you for being there and for the ribbon cutting ceremony. And seeing this school out there, Tesla has returned back to its roots out there, to Tesla Educational Center out there. And this is going to be just the tip of the iceberg there, that school is going to increase in enrollment and flourish. And then Superintendent Gall and I had the opportunity to partner with Congressman Lambone just out here. He introduced an initiative which is fighting drugs in our school, fentanyl, that is becoming a serious problem and is, what we learnt out there is just a packet of sugar that we get, we put in our coffee and everything like that. That packet of sugar can kill thousands of people. It's only a drop of fentanyl and Congressman Lambone is introducing legislation. It's a nonpartisan legislation that he is partnering with a Democrat, Joe Negus. I think he's also a congressman from the state of Colorado and they are pushing a legislation that if it passes, it'll bring hundred and forty million dollars to the entire country and it'll be distributed to schools to purchase Narcan to fight fentanyl. We already have Narcan in our schools, but getting some of these supports from the federal government will open up our resources for other things. Sometimes we get all these unfunded mandates from the state and the federal level that we need to set aside our dollars for now having. And we had superintendents and school board members from several surrounding school districts in the audience out here, but District 11 took the initiative to partner, to get this some leverage and to move this through the Congress and hopefully this will pass. And that's all I have, I think, for my board member report. Thank you. Moving on, Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are C2, approval of August 9th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, and C3, approval of personnel recommendations, August 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Action items, Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item D1?
I move that the Board of Education authorizes the Executive Director of Procurement and Contracting, Rosa Garcia, to execute the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, for the 2023 coordinated election to be held on November 7th, 2023, at a total estimated cost of a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents to allow for the district's board election.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, this is new information, what do you have?
Yeah, I'd like to bring our director, Rosa Garcia, forward and make that formal announcement. I think we are remiss in the promotion of Chris. Rosa had served as interim for some time, but is now the formal director. So congratulations, we're excited for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Education. Tonight, I wanna bring to you the Intergovernmental Agreement for the upcoming, thank you, I forget, I'm a little short. Upcoming November 7th, coordinated election. The district plans to participate in this election in order to place four board seats on the ballot. Chief Bailey is our designated election official, DEO, and has oversight for the district's participation in the election and is here to address any election questions. The estimated total cost to participate is one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. A fifty percent deposit is required upfront and the balance is billed after the election certified count is finalized. Our participation costs are shared amongst all participants of the election, such as other school districts, the city, and the county, and are proportioned to the number of registered voters for each corresponding jurisdiction. The only factor that would cause the portion of the election fees to increase is if a participant, such as a school district, dropped out of the election. Okay? For example, another school district that receives exactly the amount of board candidates as they have vacancies, that district can withdraw from the election and that would cause the participation pool to be lowered and the cost to go up. Okay? The deadline for turning in our executed IGA and the fifty percent deposit is August 29th. Other important election dates to remember are September 1st, last date for candidates for the Office of School District Director to file a nomination petition. September 8th, last date for the DEO to certify the ballot content. September 25th, last date for the DEO to deliver ballot issue notices to the county clerk. Our contracted attorney has reviewed and signed the IGA for legal sufficiency. Once you approve, Chief Bailey will hand carry the deposit and sign the, and design IGA directly to the election office. This concludes my overview of the IGA and its process. I now turn it over to the board for any questions for myself or for Chief Bailey.
Okay, thank you. This is standard operational procedure for the district to participate in the local elections and happens every two years or whenever the district has something, some issue that needs to get on the ballot. Board members, any questions or concerns at this time? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the contract award has been approved by the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, Director Bankes, can you please make the motion for the next action item?
I move that the Board of, I move that the Board of Education approves a hundred thousand dollar transfer from student transportation to operations and maintenance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Superintendent Gall.
Yeah, Chief. Thank you, Superintendent Gall, good evening, Board of Education. I just wanna explain more for the general public what we're doing with this hundred thousand dollars. But before I get started, Mr. CJ McCamell is here, he's our Director of Transportation. And if you have any technical questions that I can't answer, Mr. McCamell would be able to answer those. We are asking for an internal transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from existing board-approved budgets, just from one budget to another. More specifically, what I'm gonna call the yellow bus account to the white fleet account. Currently, we have a yellow bus fleet replacement plan and recurring budget of six hundred thousand dollars in a capital reserve account. However, we do not have any white fleet replacement plan or budget. We have a hundred and thirty-nine white fleet vehicles with the majority of those over fifteen years old. White fleet vehicles support security, food nutrition services, facilities, operations, and maintenance, IT, warehouse, and transportation. White fleet vehicles are used by several district staff to support various operational functions. For example, our 24/7 security rovers, our food nutrition service operations, delivery of warehouse and food service to all the various kitchens, and IT technology support are just a few. These vehicles include twenty-seven of the hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-seven are specialty-type vehicles. For example, our striping vehicle, our landscaping flatbed trailer, and our box trucks for deliveries are just a few examples of what a specialty vehicle is. We repair these until they are not repairable, we can't find parts, or there's been an incident that is totally demolished or totaled the vehicle and we have to take it out of inventory. With this transfer, we'll be able to immediately purchase four Chevy Trailblazers. The current replacement schedule will have them assigned to security and we will assign or cycle out four existing security vehicles and put them into operational fleet management. Up to now, we have relied solely on budget transfers and pooling funds from various department accounts and cobbling together enough to purchase vehicles. This approach does not increase the overall budget and will not negatively impact our yellow bus fleet replacement cycle, even with the reduced buying power that six hundred thousand dollars buys in today's amount. Our district enrollment has declined over the years and our sixty-six passenger yellow bus needs have declined accordingly. When the six hundred thousand dollar budget was implemented over fifteen years ago, a sixty-six passenger bus was seventy-five thousand dollars. Today, and we were able to buy eight of them, and today it's about a hundred and forty thousand. So we can get about four sixty-six passenger yellow buses. We could also purchase an activity bus, which is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. With the, so if we take a hundred thousand and reduce the six hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, our buying power isn't reduced that much. We would still be able to purchase three activity buses and a yellow bus and still have the hundred thousand dollars. While we don't have a replacement plan quite established, we'll go to the highest need until we can get into a replacement cycle. It is uncertain what we're gonna need for next year, but we'll get this started and we'll share out with you what we're gonna be purchasing with the white fleet. This concludes my overview of what we're gonna do with our hundred thousand and kind of a high overview of what our white fleet looks like. At this time, I turn it back over to the board president and the board for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that presentation, board members' questions. Director Jorgensen.
So it sounded like the transfer's gonna be permanent. And so moving forward, will we just see that reflected in our budget that it's five hundred thousand for the yellow and a hundred thousand more for white fleet?
Laura Heronick will have to do that in the budget, but that's gonna be the ask. So next year, when it's the IBR processing, you're doing the budget for next year.
We'll see that.
That's what we're gonna be asking for.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Director Nelson?
Just a comment that it's interesting that we have it so separated and should we just keep it at six hundred thousand and then say, take care of your transportation needs, whatever that looks like across the district? Just an idea.
We would certainly be open for that conversation as we develop next year's budget. We're just following internal protocol now, but the shift of where the need is in transportation, I mean, we did this last year with FTE, right? A hundred and ten FTE with fifty-six drivers. It's a lot of money to have pre-programmed in a budget. And eight hundred thousand dollars, even six hundred thousand dollars without a need to recapitalize particularly a Petro-driven yellow bus system means what we should be doing is recapping into our white fleet. So we'll come back to the board and budget development for that if this transfer goes through. We will come back to the board regardless of whether this transfer goes through, I wanna be clear there. This is y'all's decision, I didn't mean it that way.
Any further comments or questions from there? Seeing none, it is also good to know that our yellow fleet buses are not going to be impacted by it. And I know that, Mr. Campbell, that you are taking over the transportation for our school district this year and you have been in that job, I think, even from last year, from the end of last year. So one of the constant feedback that we get from parents is about transportation and making sure kids are picked up on time and dropped off on time and also at the right spots and right location. Hopefully, the beginning of the school year has gone well for you and your department. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, appreciate that with that.
Before you hit the roll call, I just want, for the public, I did ask the team to look at lease options. This idea of churning through, you know, forty thousand miles a year on a vehicle, we know is very costly. Because of the demand system right now, for, these are really private vehicles that we're gonna use for our security team, the math just doesn't work. It costs us more money to lease them than it does just outright purchase them. But we are asking the team to think about different ways that we're not constantly just in the old way of, well, we need to buy a new truck. So do we really wanna buy a new truck or do we just wanna lease one? Well, right now, we're just happy that we can get our hands on a couple of trucks.
That's the truth.
And which is, thank you for that feedback too. It is due diligence to do and look at every option that is out there, whether it's lease or purchase, and that's responsible stewardship of taxpayers' dollars. Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, Director Daniels?
Thank you. I was just curious about the, how the hop skip drive thing is going and assisting with the transportation as well?
Well, it's not part of this contract presentation at this time.
We're happy to bring a transportation update to upcoming work session when you get to the end.
Okay. You make that request, Director Daniels, in future agenda items. With that, roll call, please. With that, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. This budget transfer has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for action item D3? Could you turn the micro- yeah, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approves the capital projects contingency transfers and new projects totaling $2,395,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded again, new information Superintendent Gall.
Ms. Hoteling?
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you all. Thank you Superintendent Gall, good evening Board. We have a couple of items that we have brought for your approval tonight. We have a yearly budget change that happens in July, right in the middle of construction season, and due to that, we have some things that occur that require us to come back and just get approval on projects that are already approved historically and operating, but just the timing of things and how that worked out and the amounts that they equated to required us to return and get your approval on these contingency transfers. So Coronado's track and field, Doherty's track and field, grant HVAC upgrades, and the academic support plan are contingency transfers requested this evening. Any questions on any of those that I can answer for you?
Are you done with your presentation?
Nope, sorry.
Finish your presentation.
I'll finish my presentation then ask for questions, sorry. First timer.
No, you've been here enough times. It's good to see you.
I only get to use that once, right?
Yeah.
I did it for a whole year.
Okay.
How long your first is, it's the first year.
That's even better. And then new projects that we have that we're requesting to add, typically we add new projects twice a year, once at the beginning of the fiscal year, once in November when we do mid-year budget requests. We're asking for these out of that cycle due to the nature of the projects. Swigert retaining wall got fractured, it's damaged, it's damaged pretty badly, and it's holding up a parking lot on the other side of Swigert. We want to continue to be good neighbors and get that repaired. The wall has literally broken away and is coming down. It's shored up right now, so it's safe as far as structurally, it won't continue to slide, but we need to get action on that faster, so that's why we're here for that one. Holmes bleachers motorization, the bleachers get damaged when they're pulled out by manual means, so it would be better for our district to motorize those, they're fairly new, so we're just going to put those motors on as soon as we can. And then the Mitchell Courtyard Design and Construction, that's a collaborative effort. I was talking to Mr. Smith tonight, but we're going to be working with Mitchell on the design and with students in some capacity. I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but we're excited to start working with them on that, to get those courtyards into conditions where they're more educationally friendly, where they're more inviting for students to be, where it's a place where they can sit outside and enjoy a cup of coffee while they're studying their wonderful science books. So those are our three new project requests. Any questions on any of what's been presented?
Board, you heard the presentation, any thoughts or questions to Ms. Hoteling, who has had a very busy and active summer, making sure that everything, as far as construction projects, everything is going on. Thank you. Director Ott.
Thank you. A question about the Mitchell Courtyard Design and Construction. I don't know how far along you are on that. Will the students have input?
That is what we are working towards. Yep, students are going to have input on the design.
Okay.
And whether or not on the construction, left to be seen. I think there's legalities involved in that that might prevent too much involvement, but we'll, we'll see what we can do.
So this is an offshoot of kind of an accident from Doherty last year. I used some small contingency funds at Doherty last year for the outdoor eating and seating area at the front of the school, and then when I was walking Mitchell late last year, I thought to myself, "These courtyards are an embarrassment. This is not how we want our kids to feel that they're in that community setting," and so I reached out to the Capitol team and the George, and I said, "Would you be interested in a student-led process and design to figure out what it is that they want to do with that?" So we're putting the money to the side to get it ready to start the design phases, but the whole thing was built on students wanting that space better. So much to the same way the students designed that space at Doherty, we want it to be functional for the students. Now, we'll meet all the other requirements, we'll make sure that we're not putting 100 gallons a week into some, you know, flowering plants or something like that, but this will be, the intent of this was to engage the students in the redesign of those internal courtyards, because they're just are an embarrassment for our kid staff to walk by every day.
Thank you. I know a couple of years ago, a student who I think was a freshman, so she still maybe has time to be engaged, had expressed interest in a garden there, and so, yes, some plants would take water, but any plant you try to establish in this place will early on, but I'm glad to hear that you can have some student input. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Director Nelson?
When I look at 325,000, 375,000, sorry, for a second there, I lost my place, for a wall, I just think, "Man, that's a lot of money for a wall." But I know at my home, we have a tiered backyard, and we looked at one point into engineered walls, and they're very expensive, so just, I'm guessing that's the case here.
Yes, so HCDAs is the team that we have working on the structural plans for that wall. We just actually walked it today with the contractors, and when we asked HCDAs, usually when we have a design in progress, they can give us an idea of what they think that the cost will be for construction. They didn't dare to guess on that. The wall is over five feet tall, so it has to have structural supports. It's going to probably be tiered down, stepped down in two places. There's two different options for the construction teams to consider for the rebuild, but it's a big wall.
Well, it's important.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? So the first four items that you had out there, Coronado, Doherty, Track and Field, Grant, HVAC upgrade, those are all because we went over the projected cost for those facilities, the money that had been set aside?
They are not. So at the end of the fiscal year, well, several months before the end of the fiscal year, our team does the best that they can to kind of estimate where we're going to be with costs on projects by June 30th, and we submit that in our budget in the end of April. And we got six weeks of rain that delayed a lot of our exterior work, so the projections that we provided did not come to fruition the way that we thought. So when we reset our FY '24 budget, it's a little bit off, so this is truing up that budget to get it corrected. The Doherty Track and Field upgrade does have some additional dollars that were needed for that project. They ran into soft spots in the field, and they had to use cement stabilization to get those soft spots resolved so they could finish the fieldwork there. So there is additional dollars required for Doherty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion has been approved for capital projects contingency transfer and new projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item, the next action item?
This is action item four.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approves the general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $170,000 for the 2023 election intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is Ms. Rose Garcia here?
Unless there are any further questions, we just kind of went over that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you need me to bring someone back for presentation?
That's fine. I mean, does the board have? There is another item here. Yeah.
Come on, Phoebe. This is really Chief Bailey's. For the amount of funding that we have in the election budget, I believe it's $30,500, we are asking for a contingency fund of the full estimated value of the IGA, and that's what this transfer request is for.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, roll call please.
I'm sorry. Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-4, Hispanic Heritage Month. Director Ott, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for actual item? D5, Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yes, but before I do, I happen to have something, a little flower crown for celebrating things like Dia de los Muertos, so I, since I just happened to have that on hand, I decided I would wear it. So the Resolution 2024-4, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th, 2023. Whereas we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to honor the heritage, cultures, and vast contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas, learning about the Hispanic culture and contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future helps us embrace inclusion and acceptance of each other regardless of our cultures and various backgrounds. Whereas the name of our state, Colorado, has its origin in the Spanish language, early Spanish explorers in the Rocky Mountain region named a river they found, the Rio Colorado, for the reddish silt that the water carried down from the mountains. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 honors the contributions of Hispanic American students, faculty, and staff throughout its schools and wishes to celebrate their tremendous performance and service. And whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 also reflect respectfully appreciates the relentless work and dedication of Hispanic American parents, grandparents, and guardians who contribute their time and talents on behalf of the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that September 15 through October 15, 2023, be declared Hispanic Heritage Month in Colorado Springs School District 11, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education respectfully encourages each school to share in this annual tribute by celebrating the generations of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our nation and society.
Second.
Got to make that motion first. I move that the Board of Education endorses Resolution 2024-04, honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Director Daniels. Any comments or feedback from the board? Thank you for reading that resolution and the wonderful head attire that you have. Roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The resolution has been adopted. Moving on to non-action item, Resolution 2024-3, Legislative Liaisons. This is new information, and I think this is, again, standard procedure that we do. Superintendent Gall.
Dr. Comfort.
Dr. Comfort.
Good evening. Just to let the board know, I think I still saw a hint of daylight outside, and I believe on the last item, so I'm happy to delay us if we would like to. But as President Malpackham stated, this is a standard yearly task related to Policy BJA that requires employees representing the district in legislative matters to have prior board approval. This resolution identifies those employees who will be authorized by the district in legislative matters. I turn it over to the board for any potential questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Comfort? Again, this is standard procedure. Seeing none, is there something, I think we can move this to consent.
We can move this to consent, yes.
Okay. Do I have thumbs up to move this to consent? Yes. Yeah, we'll move this to consent, thank you. With that, request for new agenda items from board members. Director Ott.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, board members, fellow board members, you may have received the email from the Colorado Association of School Boards about delegate assembly, and just a heads up, we do need to decide our delegate to the assembly in October by September 12th. So I don't know if that's something we can cover in the retreat next week or in a work session in early September, but we do want to get to it. So President Malpackham, if, maybe that's already on the retreat agenda, but I want to make sure we.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
I currently delegate, if I remember right, as Dr. Jorgensen, right? Yes.
That was for last year.
Yeah, for last year. So we just have to.
Right, check the dates, if, that's in that email, so check the dates, make sure you can attend. They have a virtual option this year for the assembly in October at least, so, thanks.
Any further request, board item, agenda item request from board members? Seeing none, calendar review. We do have, August 30th will be board retreat, it'll be offsite, and the information will be conveyed by Ms. Olson, I think it's up here, it's all been confirmed at the, so it'll be at the U.S. Olympic and Paralympic Museum where we have held a prior retreat before, and the time is from 4:00 to 7:00. The agenda items for that retreat will be what Director Nelson requested about setting SMART goals for this year, and we will have, I reached out to Dr. Walt Cooper who has in the past facilitated these type of board retreats, but Dr. Cooper stated that he is no longer going to be doing that, and he recommended another person that can help facilitate that. It's Mr. Welsh and Superintendent Gall, and I am supposed to have a virtual meeting with him tomorrow to just present him some basic idea as to what the expectations are for that retreat. So he will be there. The other item that will be there on that board retreat would be the self-evaluation that the board completed. Dr. Kalak, he has sent me a report on that, I will forward it to the board, so you will have time to look at that self-evaluation, and we will ask Mr. Welsh to facilitate that conversations and some takeaways from that too. And I think Director Ott, you're also working on that operational, the board operations manual, and this is an opportunity for us to look at some of the revisions if you are ready with that. Okay, great. And then we will certainly look at that delegate assembly that you talked about out there for the CASB thing. So if anything else comes up, I will bring it up at the retreat. Wednesday, September 6th, it's a work session, and at that work session, I think we are going to look at a deep dive into the CMAS data. By that time, we will have, some other data is still embargoed, some is available for the general public, so by September 6th, everything should be available, and I think that's what is on the agenda. I'm not sure if there is another item on there, or we may have Dr. Comfort's COPS follow-up conversation, that will be on that September 6th work session too. September 13th is a regular board meeting, and I don't know what's on that agenda, so with that. May I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, hang on, yep. Let's have the microphones working so we can hear. Okay, go ahead, Director Daniels.
I move that the Board of Education adjourns.
Second.
This is a record.
Did we have a second?
Yes, second.
Second, moved and seconded, roll call please.
Hold on one second, I got to catch up to you. Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Okay, we are officially adjourned at 8:01 PM, and there is still some daylight outside.